If we could please just introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Hamilton County Commission.
Good afternoon, County Commissioner Denny Streethouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Thank you so much. Stephanie Summeral-Doom is President of the Board. We have a few items on the agenda we need to get through. And our first, do I need to excuse our Law Director or no, just wait for him to come in?
I saw him coming through.
Oh, did you? Okay.
But I don't need to formally excuse him anyway, so.
Very good. First item on the agenda is Hamilton County Sidewalk Program. Eric Beck, Jeff Aludo.
Madam President, I would like to defer a summary of the program. So, just a little bit of background here. So, the Board had asked a couple of months ago that we look at as we move forward with the sidewalk program, which is a program of the Board of County Commissioners. It's operated through the county engineer. That we look at different ways to, or different options or opportunities and alternatives to help, in particular, individuals with financial challenges afford the program. So, we had done some research on this and are ready to report back today with some initial options and a path forward. And we'll get to that, the recommendations here in a moment. But first, just to kind of tee up the overall overview, especially for public who may be watching, I'd ask Senior Policy Manager Mark Von Allman to just provide a summary of that.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks. Just, yeah, a real quick summary of what exists today before Jeff gets into next steps. And of course, Eric's here to correct me if I get anything wrong. But the county has a sidewalk policy that's implemented by the county engineer's office. I was authorized by commissioners back in 1989. It was last updated back in 2001. Simply, this policy consists of the county engineer's office going out and inspecting sidewalks along county roads and townships on a six-year basis. And if sidewalks are found to be in need of repair, abutting property owners are either required to fix the sidewalk themselves or they're able to have the county fix the sidewalks and they repay the county for that repair in the form of a property tax assessment. And I'll just quickly note that some townships do partner with the county engineer's office to cover that property tax assessment, but it varies from township to township. As Jeff mentioned, there was a request for the administration to investigate providing some sort of relief to property owners that have sidewalk repairs required. One of our initial steps was to reach out to the prosecutor's office. And they provided a legal opinion that we were able to provide this kind of relief, but that if we were to add that to our existing policy, that the relief would need to be done in a uniform manner. So, if we're looking to provide relief, say, on a kind of a financial need basis, we're not authorized to do so under our revised code. If we're providing relief for partial assessment, that has to be done in a uniform manner. Or if we're providing full relief, that needs to be done in a uniform manner. So, that kind of leaves us where we are today. And Jeff, if you wanted to talk about next steps.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mark. So, as Mark had indicated, the ultimate direction that we received legally on this was that we can't do something other than a uniform approach to this in terms of waiving an assessment. So, the Board can choose to assess the full amount of the improvement. It can assess a partial amount or it can assess nothing. That's within the Board's right to do. So, in terms of options here, that is the first option that the Board has is to, is either one of those, to assess fully, partial, or none of the project cost. And as Mark said, it can't differ based upon an income level. Administratively, we don't really have a recommendation for the Board on that. That's really purely a matter of policy. There's no math that can get me to, oh, we should waive this amount because of X, Y, or Z. It really is much more of a policy. There's no specific recommendation. Before I go further with another option, Mr. Beck wanted to, I think, chime in with something.
No, I just, in case there's any questions.
Okay. So, another option, and admittedly, this came to light very late in our analysis, like right as we were pulling the report together. And it required a bit of a historical look at this. But in the past, the Board did have a program that was called a TAP grant program. And it was a program that was funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. It was a grant program, I believe, and we have not done the full background research on this yet. It ended several years ago as the Board looked to strategically put its dollars into other places. But the TAP grant program, what it did was provided people with low moderate income, low moderate income homeowners, the ability to obtain grant funding when they were required to close out a septic system and tap into the public sewer system. So, from our perspective, there may be the ability, if the Board wanted to strategically pursue a more income-dependent approach to the program, there may be the ability to do something similar to that, where you would operate the sidewalk program in accordance with state law exactly the way we have to operate it, but on the side have a CDBG program that was set up to provide people of low moderate income with grant opportunities to offset that hardship should they face it. So, that's something we literally just came up with within the last two days. So, we have not had the opportunity to assess questions of, does the same legality apply? Have there been any changes to the federal law that would prohibit that? Are there dollars available in CDBG that the Board would want to pull aside for this? And how would we go about amending our action plan to do it? So, what I would recommend to the Board, and this is where I might turn it over to Eric for some technical information. We still have a little bit of time here, but we're up against a little bit of a crunch that I think the engineer's office needs to bid the program. Because if we don't get it out to bid, we're very concerned, number one, that we're going to be able to implement it at all this year or that we won't get prices because as contractors are out there getting work, even the contractors who typically bid on this might be doing other things. And we'll just, either won't have the capacity or we won't get the best and most responsive bid on this. So, number one, I'd recommend that we allow the engineer to bring the necessary resolution to get this out on the street. But during that time, we can continue the research on the CDBG approach. Or by the time we get the bids back, the Board could decide to pursue either the CDBG approach, if it's viable, or at that time, if it's not, to choose to do a, if the Board chose to do so, a partial assessment. So, either way, you still have options open once the bids come back in. So, Erica wanted to-
You actually have a little more time than that, Jeff, I believe. Because once we bid and construct the project, the whole construction needs to be done and the contract closed out before we go to assessment of the property owners that haven't paid. And that would come back to the Board. So, you technically have, we don't invoice anybody that hasn't paid until after everything is completed and we come back to the Board to ask for assessment.
So, we still have a decent amount of time here for the Board to decide from a policy perspective, whether or not they want to do anything here or one of these other approaches that we talked about. Got it?
Yeah, you probably have till September, October.
So, with that, Commissioners, turn it over to the Board for any questions.
Well, the bottom line is we all want to help with these assessments, any way we can with our residents. And I would move toward a fast track on this if we can. And I also like, we want to follow the lead of the prosecutor and what they've assessed. But also, that CDBG program sounds really good if we are able to do that. Just one question I had, the assessments happen every six years?
Correct.
And is there a reason why so?
We just kind of split it up so that it was equal amounts to get the contract amount so that we would have enough in a contract that a contractor would bid on it and it wouldn't be too big a contract to do, and too much of a burden. So, each property owner, we would only inspect in front of each house once every six years.
Okay. 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 Thank you. Vice President Reese, did you have any comments?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you both for looking into this. I know it's something that our Board was concerned with. And I know I specifically had asked about how we might be able to help people because of the timing. People are getting hit by so many things, and now also inflation. So, they're trying to hold on to their house. And we actually put together and found, and now it's being implemented through our treasurer, where we're able to utilize some of the funding that we put to the side, I think $5 million, to help with people's back property tax as well as utilities that they might have and mortgage payment. So, what I don't want to do is put another, I guess, people in that category. Because I guess essentially, the assessment is kind of like, is that seemingly like a property tax lien? Or is that something different?
Yeah, it would go on their property taxes. Basically, if they have $500, the cost for the sidewalk, it would be over, they go on their taxes over five years. So, basically, an additional $100 on their property tax annually.
Gotcha. And I know that we don't want to work backwards because we're trying to help get people out of that situation. My other question I have for you, and obviously, I'm not recommending this, but I do want to know all of our options. When you say you do it every six years, and I'm not necessarily saying that's the way to go, have we ever suspended the sidewalk program?
I believe we've done it every year since it was initiated.
Are we lea-
We used to do it more frequently. We used to be, I think we did it every four years. We had it in quarters, split the county in quarters. And now we've kind of cut the time back.
So, based on, let's say, circumstance, we're looking at like, hey, what's going on right now? We're trying to help people back on their feet. We obviously want safety, but is an option for us to suspend the program for a little short amount of time?
Absolutely. It's your policy. And I think you would need to look at the liability behind, you know, if we've identified that there's safety hazards of liability of not repairing them.
I was thinking like maybe moving forward, like if we wanted to. So, I don't know. I think legally, I'd like for us to look at what is our option there? Are we able to temporarily suspend a program until people kind of get back on their feet as long as it's not a life or death situation? And I would recommend us getting that information. I don't know if we have an answer to that today. I don't know if Michael or Jeff.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, I don't know that the statute requires the Board to implement a program every single year. So, I don't think there's anything that would prevent you from suspending the program. I would say that, and to Mr. Beck's, Engineer Beck's point, I think the program does serve a very viable purpose in terms of, and you alluded to this, Madam Vice President, in terms of, number one, eliminating blight in communities when you're talking about broken up sidewalks, that type of thing, eliminating pedestrian hazards, bicycle hazards, that type of thing. So, in recognizing that the annual cost of the program, Eric, is, I think we were looking at, on average,
Sixty to seventy-five thousand.
Sixty to eighty thousand dollars a year.
Right.
I would say that, you know, if there, the one option, wouldn't make a recommendation at this point, would want to think through some things. But as opposed to suspending the program to look at an alternative funding source in a way that was, where the Board was saying it was tied to some specific economic circumstances. Because again, I think that there are, there could, from a resident's perspective, someone could say, why are you suspending it now when I just had to pay my, you know, I had to pay my assessment last year? But if it were tied to some specific economic triggers or something like that, the Board could say, in this particular case, we're going to subsidize it by X amount, even if it's the full amount or whatever, as the Board has the right to do. And then it goes back to the normal program when those triggers are alleviated. So, just some options. We can think through that more. But to your point, I don't think there's anything in the statute that requires the program to be implemented.
That's correct. And my recommendation, again, this would be liability-wise, what the program we have right now, ready to go to bid, we've already identified safety issues and we've moved forward with a plan. So, it seems like we should do those. If we're going to suspend it, we don't go out and inspect the next time so that we haven't identified something that is a potential problem.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about-
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I guess, a two-pronged approach. I'm talking about a two-pronged approach. One, we have a program that's not mandatory by statutory law. The State of Ohio is not requiring us to do this.
Correct.
There was a prior boards before we got here that decided to put this and maybe the economic circumstances were a lot better back then. Then there was a group that came in and obviously had a TAP program and that wasn't us. And they had, so now it's our turn. And I'm saying, we're in a pandemic. We didn't have one before. People, inflation is hitting folks and we're even running out of baby milk. It's just a lot of things happening. And what I'm trying to do is how do we reduce the burden on the homeowners? The homeowners got to pay for everything. And they're just trying to hold on. And we're also pushing affordable housing. So, we're not trying to do anything that's making it more unaffordable for the people who are already in a house. So, just was kind of looking forward to, obviously, you know, I don't know, if we're going to do a sidewalk program, maybe we need to have a sidewalk budget and we go out and get these sidewalks fixed. But a senior citizen is barely trying to hang on to that house. That's what I'm kind of thinking of right now. Now, maybe 10 years ago or 15 years ago, they didn't have that problem. So, just trying to look forward. It may be a two-pronged approach. The other thing is people who already owe, I don't know how much that is. But I think it would be good to know who we could get maybe from the treasurer's office, who's tangled up with an assessment on their property tax that are having difficulty and have not paid it. So, we kind of know what that is. And if an option is an amnesty, I just want to know all the options and then we can kind of, and it's not to stop the progress of what you're putting out to bid. But as we move forward, I want to know, can we put an amnesty program for the people that's tangled up down there right now with a lien on their property because of the sidewalks? Two, is there, do we need to look at having a sidewalk fund that we have? Like you got a fund already on things that you come forward to us. You say, hey, that's coming out of this fund. It doesn't cost the taxpayer extras coming out of a fund that you, you have several restricted funds that you manage. And then, should we look at suspending it temporarily until things kind of bounce back? And it may not be suspension for this particular, suspension for the next. So, those are the questions that I have going forward. In terms, just basically looking at the program overall, I want to look at, is there amnesty opportunities for people who have currently a lien on their property for their home? Can we put together a fund? You say $70,000. We got a billion-dollar budget. Is there something, a fund we can have that people can draw down on for sidewalks? And then we said, it's all we can do for sidewalks this year, you know, like everybody else? Because when you talk about being equal, I think we already got kind of an unequal plan based on what you were telling me, Mr. Administrator. Some townships handle it maybe different than other townships. So, even though you're living in Hamilton County at large, one township, you might get a lien. Another township, they got a program, you won't get a lien. So, we are looking to, how do we have one set of rules to help all of it? Whether you're in a township, a village, or a city, if you're in Hamilton County, we want the sidewalks to look good, but we also don't want it to just fall on certain people and not other people. So, I think you're right about, I'm for a generalized program. One set of rules, one concept, one direction. What that is, I don't know today, but I just wanted to put that out there as you're looking at more, when we look at the overall project, that's the, those are the options that I'd like for us to consider and maybe see legally, can we do those things?
And Madam President, if I could, just to address that point, I'll ask for Eric's clarification on this. But the county operates the countywide sidewalk program, but there are townships out there that choose to essentially pay for the assessment or pay for the cost within their particular township. So, the total amount of the work is X. And certain townships, say, for the streets that you, sidewalks you did in our township, we're going to pay you for that on behalf of our property owners, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And not, but not every township does that?
We have two townships that pay for all of them. And we have two townships that only pay them on residential, not commercial.
And I got a question. Are these only townships that this sidewalk program?
Yeah, this is only for county roads within the townships.
Okay. And so, we'll be able to see which other, so does every township put something toward it or just?
No.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, that's why I said, be able to try to, I don't know, make sure that it's one set for everybody. So, thank you. This has been great information.
Thank you. Commissioner Streethouse.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. So, just to clarify on that last point. So, the city of Cincinnati has their own sidewalk program.
I believe that is correct, yes.
And it's, and I'm somewhat familiar because I got assessed a while back. So, I think it runs just like the counties runs right now. And so, our, the program we're talking about is townships, villages, or?
No, just townships. Just on county roads within the township. It's not township roads. It's just county roadways, sidewalks on county roadways.
Okay. And so, these other small cities and villages then presumably either have or do not have a sidewalk program of their own?
Yeah. They all have home rules, so they can all do what they wish to do.
Okay. Okay. That's interesting. Interesting. So, that leads me to the question of how many people, I don't have any sense of how many people get the notice from the county engineer's office every year that say, hey, you need to repair your sidewalks?
I would say it's between 100 and 150 parcels, properties.
Okay. Per year? And the average cost is, did you say three to $400?
Three to $500, yes. And they have three options. They can repair it themselves. They can let the county's contract do the repairs and pay the county. Or they can let the county do the repairs and be assessed and have it on their property tax. So, they have three options for paying for it.
And they have how long to pay it off if they put it on the property tax?
Up to, up to, up to seven years.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, I think that's helpful by, for me, at least by way of context because I didn't really have a sense of how many people we're talking about and where they live.
Yes, it's just county roads within the unincorporated areas.
Okay, gotcha. So, if we were to do something related to CDBG grants or partial assessments, and I know it would depend on the amount that we would want to provide by way of relief. But I, again, I don't have any real understanding, given these numbers, of how much money we're talking about. Like if we were to take money out of CDBG funds to either partially or totally take on this cost as a county, is it, it would be the full 60,000 to 80,000 if it was the entire program? And then we could determine otherwise if we wanted to do less. And that would be in the form of a, but a grant would be related to income?
Yes, right. So, I think a couple, and this is something that we would have to look into. Number one is, could CDBG even be used as a offset to the, uniformly to the program? And I'm not certain that it could because there might have to be a low moderate income eligibility requirement to the use of those dollars unless there was, unless it could fall within blight remediation or public works or some other component that was eligible for CDBG. So, we would have to look at that. It's possible. I just don't know that that's, that it, that we can use it that way. The, we were, the thought was is that if the Board wanted to do a, only a partial assessment, that that would essentially be a uniform assessment and the subsidy would essentially come from the general fund at that point.
Okay. Okay. I was going to ask one other question. Yeah, I am a, I worry a little bit about not having the program because of the safety element here and people, you know, walking along these sidewalks throughout the townships. And I know that's why the city has theirs with the tree roots growing up and displacing all this concrete. So, I worry a little bit about that. If it were temporary, maybe that would make a difference. But I think it's a valuable program to make sure that our infrastructure is maintained. Just a matter of how we do it, right? So, okay, well, I will look forward to all the information that's been requested and some options as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. And so, if we can get in writing the options that we have that were brought up, including possible amnesty, possible CDBG. And also, you just mentioned, Eric, about the options that the residents have as it relates to their, them paying the assessment. So, if we can get all that in writing, that would be great. And I like pictures, just for me.
Sure.
But if you could just show me what a $200 assessment would be for a sidewalk versus 500. Do you have a, like, so it depends on who is assessing, the individual assessor? There's really no gauge on how you come up from 100 assessment to $500?
It's, it depends on, the contract bid price is, when we bid it out, it's a cost per square footage of sidewalk. So, it's however much square footage of sidewalk's been identified for their property times the cost per square foot. That's how it comes, how we come up with it.
So, what about the variables as it relates to, if my sidewalk is just crumbling, I would think the assessment would be higher depending on?
The cost to replace it's the same. Because we do the same thing with each one. We take out the block of sidewalk that's bad. It's either raised up or settled down, caused a tripping hazard or falling apart. The contract, the contract calls for them to come in and take that block out, recompact the sub grade and pour a new block in.
So, condition basically doesn't matter. It's the square footage of what it is.
It's the square footage, yes.
I would just add that the condition only matters in terms of determining whether or not to replace that block or not.
That's correct.
And there are some standards that go along with that as well.
Yes. It's the amount of deflection that causes a tripping hazard. I think it's a half inch, but I'm not, I think it's a half inch. And then if, or if, you know, there's some low spots you can see when you're walking down a sidewalk where water sits. So, you can obviously see those. We like to get rid of those. Those sort of problems where there's a safety issue.
Thank you so much. And we'll have this come up very soon because I'd like to not sit on this if we, if people are waiting.
So, I guess from my point of view, are we, is it all right for me to bring forth this existing contract to go to bid or not? That's where we stand right now. Or do you want to hold the existing contract and not go to bid? Or do, can I proceed with bringing to the clerk the program to go out to bid?
And Madam President, just to, just to add, for the conversation before, the amount and the time to go out to bid and to do the assessment, there will still be time for the Board to consider all of these different programmatic options. But it will give the engineer the ability to ensure that he can still get viable bids on this year's program.
And that's what I was going to say also. So, Vice President Reese?
Yes, I'm okay with it if my colleagues are to move forward with the bid. I just want to make sure at the, kind of a dual track that, like you said, the work's got to get done. So, once the cost comes back, we got a program or how we're going to move forward. I think it's both short term as well as in the, for future. So, I think moving forward with the bid would not prohibit us from doing that. So, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should move forward with the bid.
Okay, great. We will get that packet to the clerk and you'll see it soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, we have two executive sessions. Item two, executive session to RC Section 121.22 G2 to discuss the acquisition of property. And then executive session number three pursuant to RC Section 121.22 G4 to discuss collective bargaining. I make a motion to go into executive session. I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Yes. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.